Good evening and thank you for coming to the candidate forums tonight. I'm Teresa Dedamore. I'm the Director of Program Development at the Chamber of Commerce. I'm joined upstage by Mayor Peter Clark, as well as Lisa Icorn from our Government Affairs Committee, and our moderator Cody Sinclair, who is the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee this year. Tonight's forum will be in this order: Sheridan County School District #1, Bighorn, and at-large Board Trustees, with the Ranchester Board Trustee being uncontested, and Sheridan County School District #2 Board Trustees. Candidates will have a two-minute intro followed by questions, which the moderator will be asking this evening, with up to a minute to answer and then a two-minute closing. We do have timekeepers down below to help keep the time for this evening. They have a 30-second, as well as a stop sign to help all of you keep on track. The candidate forum is being livestreamed and recorded, and our goal is to have this available on our website, which is the sherdonwyomingchamber.org, and other social media websites within 48 hours. So without further ado, let's get started, and I'll have Cody Sinclair come.
If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is up here on the stage. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to share the mission statement of the Government Affairs Committee. The Sheridan County Chamber Government Affairs Committee acts as a conduit for ideas and information regarding public policy to flow between members, the board, local municipalities, and elected officials, in order to support the health of our communities and the mission of our chamber. I'd also like to mention two items that will be on the general election ballot. First, the Sheridan County 1% Specific Purpose Capital Facilities Tax, or CAP tax, is an optional sales tax, sales and use tax approved by Sheridan County voters. 100% of the revenue collected goes to funding infrastructure projects in Sheridan, Sheridan County, Claremont, Dayton, and Ranchester. CAP tax is approved for a specific amount for specific capital improvements to community infrastructure. Once the approved amount is raised, the tax automatically expires unless voters choose to renew the tax from another round of projects. The Sheridan County voters approved this tax in 1989, 1998, 2003, 2009, 2013, and 2020. Additional information can be found at sherdoncountywy.gov. The second item, the proposed amendment to the Wyoming Constitution, or Property Tax on Residential Property and Owned Occupied Primary Residences Amendment, adds residential adds residential property as a fourth separate class of property. If passed, it authorizes the legislature to create a subclass of residential property for owner-occupied primary residences, which could be assessed at a different rate from other property in the residential property class. Additional information can be found at wyolag.gov/legislation/2024/HJ0001. All right, so we have our candidates already up on stage. We'll start out with School District 1. Please do silence your phone, and we will get started. So we have up on stage, on your left, Justin Kidney, at-large trustee, Morgan Stalick, at-large trustee, Sharon McCright, at-large trustee, and Nicholas Zent, Bighorn trustee. So to start out our two-minute intros, we'll start out with Justin.
My name is Justin Kidney. I am a 10-year resident of Bighorn. I am a retired teacher as of a year ago. I spent 31 years in the classroom, with my last 10 years at Bighorn Middle School and Bighorn High School. I am father of four children, all grown, and I have two grandchildren and a third one coming soon, so we're excited about that. I am running for the Board of Trustees for District 1 because of three reasons, for the most part. I am a social studies teacher, and I have spent my career teaching our students of Wyoming, and I've spent all 31 years in Wyoming, teaching them our system of government, why it is important for us to participate as voters, as citizens, in a variety of, you know, whether it's civic groups, or in governmental groups, and so on. And now that I feel that I have satisfied that civic duty as a teacher, a social studies teacher, I feel that it is incumbent upon me to also step out and offer myself to serve in the role as a trustee on School District #1's board. And a third reason that I am running is that I feel that as an educator for 30 years, I can provide a perspective to the board and to the other members of the board as to the challenges faced by our students, challenges faced by our teachers and our administrators as they try to create effective learning opportunities and to advance our students. Thank you, and I do believe that students are the center of why we are here.
Thanks, Justin. Morgan, you're next.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Morgan Stalick. You may know me as Morgan Barker, growing up in District 1 and attending Bighorn School from kindergarten on, and graduated from Bighorn High School in 2002. Four years later, I left the University of Wyoming with a Bachelor of Science in Kinesiology and Health Promotion. I married soon after, and we started our family in Bighorn. I coached volleyball at Bighorn Middle School and High School for 10 years, and club volleyball for even longer than that, and they even talked me into helping coach middle school boys' basketball one year. And now I just enjoy my time watching my two kids participate in every school sport possible. I currently serve as the District 1, on the District 1 Board of Trustees, the District 1 Rec Board, the Bighorn Education Fund, the Bighorn Middle School PTO, the Bighorn Booster Club, and the Sheridan YO Rodeo Royalty Board. I volunteer where I can at the Sheridan County 4H activities throughout the year, and I really enjoyed helping with costumes here with YO Play, previously Tandem Productions, for the Children's Theater for the last four years. I was appointed to the District 1 Board of Trustees last February to fill an unexpired vacancy for the Bighorn area trustee. I am just very passionate about Bighorn School and our school district, just as a whole, and I think I'm uniquely qualified for this position because I have the perspective of a former student, a former district employee, a current parent to a high schooler and a middle schooler in the district, and a lifelong community member. So I have a genuine understanding of our unique school district, and both the advantages and shortcomings of each of our schools. So I look forward to continuing to serve District 1. Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan. Sharon, you're next.
Hi, I'm Sharon McCright. I'm running for School District 1 at-large, and we live in Dayton. Been married for 42 years, my husband. We have three wonderful children, and they, we now have 10 grandchildren, so I'm kind of the other end of the spectrum. We also have had some life-changing experiences being foster parents. I've also been serving on, or have served, on the Foster Care Review Board for the state of Nebraska for six years. So it's a passionate thing that I have in my heart to care about these kids that are here. Our only son, or grandson, that has gone to this, the School 1 District in Dayton, he was there until he was in second grade, and I was a part of helping him in the school, helping the teachers, and being there as Grandma Sharon, which they still call me Grandma Sharon, the kids that are now 14-years-old. So it makes it a unique, a unique opportunity for me. I've all, we also founded a local church here a couple years ago, my husband and I and some others, and we are very passionate about that opportunity, too. Kurt and I have made this our forever home in Dayton. We got transferred here from Utah, and they said that we could go to Sheridan, and it was, "Let's go." So I'm looking forward to being part of the school board, helping with these kids, and the parents, and the teachers, and working together with all of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Nick, you're next.
First of all, thank you to the YO Theater for sponsoring this great forum, and to the Chamber of Commerce for facilitating this, a great service you're offering us. My name is Nick Zent. I am a resident of Bighorn for going about six years now. I grew up in Shoshone, and I've been a lifelong resident of the state. I am convinced that District 1 is the greatest school district on the planet, and it's my hope and goal to help it stay that way. As a trustee, I feel that a highly functional board can have a positive influence on the performance of its students, and as a direct result, the opportunities that they're afforded in life. The district has a clear mission and very ambitious goals, and I support those objectives, and understand the role of a trustee in accomplishing them. The state entrusts its local districts with both the responsibility and the autonomy to provide a high-quality and equitable education for its students. In our case, 1,043 students that reside within our district, and several that telecommute or study remotely. I'm running first and foremost to serve those students and the families of our district. If I were asked what three top priorities I would have as a trustee, first and foremost would be to foster a work environment which recruits and retains the best teachers in the district, and secondly, improve learning opportunities for our students. We have a great relationship with the college, and I want to foster that and explore other vocational opportunities for our students. And lastly, I want to ensure that our students have a safe environment to work in, and to continue to foster the relationships that we currently have, to ensure that's taking place. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Nick. So now, we're gonna start with the first of four questions, and we'll start out with Nick. You'll begin. Let me know if you need me to repeat the question. The first question, who do you consider the primary stakeholders in the school district, and what do you believe are their primary concerns?
The primary stakeholders in the school district. First and foremost, the primary stakeholders in the district are the students. Students are the reason that we're all here, opting to serve. It's the reason that the teachers, the staff, the administration are employed. It's the reason that our communities, especially in Bighorn and Tongue River, are so closely knit, because of the schools and because of the students within. Secondly, I would say that the primary concerns of the students is to ensure that they receive a high-quality and equitable education. Following that, it would be to see that our teachers are supported, and that our staff has the resources needed to fulfill every responsibility given them.
Great. Thanks, Nick. Justin?
I would agree with Mr. Zent that our students are the number-one stakeholders. They are the ones that we are focusing our efforts to provide a safe, orderly, and enriched learning environment for them. Second, that goes along with them hand-in-hand are the parents. The parents are entrusting us with that sacred duty to take their children and to advance their skills and their critical thinking skills and their knowledge, so that they are prepared for the world. I think concerns for students are the relevancy of their education, what they are learning. Is it relevant? Will it advance them? Especially as they get older in middle school and high school, they usually search for relevance. And for parents, I think not only relevance, but rigor. They want their students to be challenged. They want them to develop the thinking skills and the knowledge base that will allow them to be successful in their endeavors, whatever those may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Morgan?
I mean, again, the kids and their families, those are the primary stakeholders to me. That's why we're here. It's all for the betterment of our kids. And the concerns, as any taxpayer, you want to make sure that those funds are used to the best of every penny, and that is kind of one of the main concerns of mine, is to make sure that every dollar counts, and it's going where it needs to, to make sure that our kids are getting every single thing that they can get out of their education, but also to support our teachers, and the other activities that go on with the school that keep kids in school to finish their learning. So every penny counts, and that's kind of where I spend my focus, and that's where my concerns are. Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan. Sharon?
I think it's the teachers, the students, and the parents that are our core, that we need to look forward to and supporting. They are the ones that, if we can work together as a team for these children, we're going to put a better supporting group throughout the whole community. It's not just going to be the teachers and the students, or the parents and the students. If we put a team together, I think we're much better off. And as far as one thing that I really am cautious and want to experience, or talk about, is the three Cs that are important to me. It's common sense curriculum, civics, and cost-conscious spending.
Great. Thanks, Sharon. So Sharon, you'll start off this next question for us. So, second question, what do you see as the greatest strength and greatest weakness of the district?
Well, I think the greatest strength is the community that we have to work with. We have a great community in the Sheridan community, Bighorn, Dayton area, and being able to have that type of area to work with, I think that's one of the biggest areas that we need to focus on. Keep the excellence that we have there, the morals, the values that we have going, and keep it going together throughout the year.
Thanks, Sharon. Nick?
I could talk for days about our greatest strengths. We have so many wonderful things. Our standardized test scores are constantly the highest in the states. Our sports teams regularly compete for state championships. Our drama clubs and our theater groups put on phenomenal performances. A large percentage of our teachers have advanced degrees and are passionate about teaching our students. We have a very healthy relationship between our two schools, which I believe that a high tide raises every ship, and that competition makes us better. I feel that our district has a cohesive nature and a very strong sense of community. As far as challenges that we face, like any other district, we face the challenge of funding shortages. The state's funding model is made it very difficult for teachers to live in this area, and the cost of living has well-outpaced what we're able to pay, and I feel like we need to do a better job of figuring out creative solutions to that.
Thank you, Nick. Justin?
So, starting with the greatest strength, having taught, my career started in Sheridan, then went to Casper, and then has come back to Sheridan County. Sheridan County as a whole is unbelievable in its support in education, and providing opportunities for students of all ages, whether that be kindergartners, middle school, high school, college, and/or non-traditionals like us here on stage. And our district has embraced that and helps to promote that, and that has resulted in high learning, as evidenced by ACT scores, YTOP scores, and just the general, you sit down with one of our students, you're gonna see just how great they are and what they've learned. As a weakness, maintaining connections between the sides of the district due to distance and demographics, that's always gonna be a challenge, is how do we maintain communication, but more important, connection, feeling that we're all a part of the same team. And I think that that is always a challenge for our district, and that's something I hope to address. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Morgan?
I think one of our best strengths as a district is our small class size. We have a low student-to-teacher ratio that really helps our kids, I think, in the long run. And also, we have just such small little schools that you feel like you're a family, you know the community. We're very tight-knit on each side, but with the low enrollment numbers, comparatively speaking, it does cause, that's one of the weaknesses, would be that to get all the things that all the kids need, want, you know, really deserve, is a struggle. When you have the low enrollment numbers, the financial piece really comes into play to try to meet all of those needs and wants. So our strength is kind of also our weakness, so thanks.
Thanks, Morgan. So Morgan, you'll start out with this next question. So question three, what are the unique needs of the Bighorn and Tongue River schools, and how would you address them through policy and budget?
You know, each side kind of has their own ups and downs. Bighorn, we are just busting at the seams. We don't have a rec space the way that the Tongue River side does, but we are closer and able to use the YMCA. So there's a lot of give and take, but both sides are gonna see a huge amount of growth in the coming years, it looks like. So managing those kind of issues is gonna be a real challenge coming up. But I think having the close connection to our communities allows us to really talk to our constituents and know what issues really need to be addressed on each side, and even within the elementary, all the way up to the high school. So each building, having their own needs met, is really critical, so.
Thanks, Morgan. Sharon?
Well, I feel the needs are continued support with the families and the teachers and students. I'm very big on that. They're all doing a wonderful job, but if we can put them all together, and Bighorn, and Dayton, and Sheridan work together and find these spots that are going to trigger the needs that we all need, and work together, it can be a possibility that maybe the needs that we don't have in Dayton, we could transport a bus of students, or so many students, to Bighorn to meet the needs that they have over there, and vice versa. And so I just think there's a lot of different opportunities that we can work together and fill these needs.
Thanks, Sharon. Nick?
Unique needs of each side of the district. What comes to mind initially in Bighorn is a need for early childhood development space. Currently, those young minds are crammed into the elementary classrooms and middle school classrooms without their own environment to thrive. A great facility or a great venue for them to do so would be an immediate need in Bighorn. Likely, or equally, in Tongue River, the need that I hear most frequently is the need for more vocational spaces. The ag programs and the industrial art programs are really crammed, and there's a long waiting list for students to take those types of classes, some of the classes which aren't even available in Bighorn. And so I would say facilities and the need to grow and to scale to meet our students' needs is key, and the challenge and the policies that need to be put in place to do so are gonna have to involve creative measures to fund those things, whether it be private or exterior funding that doesn't come from tax dollars allocated by the state, is a necessity, and that needs to happen.
Thanks, Nick. Justin?
I would start with, on the Bighorn side, I would agree with Morgan and Nick concerning capacity and space for our learners. Having taught in the middle school for many years, where we had the littles in two different classrooms at the end of the hallway, so that they had space, it's not the greatest situation for them. It's not built for young ones, it's built for middle school, and so I could see that. But even more so, Morgan addressed the idea of a community center. Bighorn is not in itself an incorporated town, so not having that community center, it would be beneficial, yes, there's the Y, yes, there's those things, but a community center would help to solidify the growing community of Bighorn people. We are growing fast out there, and it would give a place for people to have as a center or a foundation for a community. And on the Tongue River side, I would say I would agree with Nick on vocational programs, but also access to more dual enrollment opportunities where kids, students could be helped in their transportation to the college for classes that they can't take at school. So, thank you.
Thanks. Justin, you'll start off with this next question, our fourth question. What considerations would you want included in any policies regarding the use of AI in education? Justin?
So, this is a huge topic of discussion across the nation, around the world, in the education world and business world, and so on. And being an adjunct instructor at the college, we've had discussions and information shared with us. And when we look at AI, as with any technology, it can be a very powerful tool for learning and a powerful tool for creativity, but at the same time, it can be used in ways that can hurt students or hurt teachers. And so as we go forth, there needs to be kind of a prioritization of what benefits do we want from AI, and how are we going to determine if those benefits are available with the AI that's being presented? And that needs to be formalized in the policy to guide our administrators, to guide our teachers as they make choices as to how best to implement, if to implement at all, AI in the classroom or in the learning environment. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Morgan?
Yeah, it really brings to light some new opportunities for some good policy to put in place on how we want to utilize it. I think it's here to stay, and these kids are gonna be using it in their adult life in many work opportunities and careers. And so I think it's gonna be important to allow them to use it in a, you know, very specific way, and that's why that policy is gonna be very important to implement, because it's similar to the cell phones. Our kids are gonna use them. They're gonna use them as adults. So we do need to teach them now how to use it appropriately, but they're gonna use it in their daily life, in their career going forward. So very similarly, I think it's one of those very important policies to put in place, step by step, so everyone knows where to fall.
Thanks, Morgan. Sharon?
I think we need to be very cautious on this and go about this slowly, and make sure we're taking the baby steps to give these kids the opportunity as they grow up or get older, and in their adult life, in their higher education, or even if it's in their workforce careers. It doesn't have to be, but we do need to be careful on how we go about putting this together.
Thank you, Sharon. Nick?
Yeah, I recall a similar conversation when I transitioned from manual typewriters to word processors, and how that would be the end of it. And it's, Justin and Morgan are exactly right, it's a tool that's there, it's real, it certainly is the future before us, and our students need to be empowered with this tool and understand its values, its benefits, its leverages in their careers. They need to understand the risks of plagiarism, they need to understand the risks of entities that probably we haven't even discovered about it yet, that are yet to be realized. And considering that, this policy must be flexible. It must be one that can be revisited often, that can ebb and flow and grow and change as the technology itself evolves, as we see this become a more and more efficient tool, or perhaps a less and less tool that's ignored. The policy needs to mirror that.
Thanks, Nick. So for closing the two-minute closing statements, we're gonna start with Nick.
Closing statements, all right. I, oh, pretty quick. That's great. Um... I am just excited to be here. I hope it's evident that each of us love Big Horn and Tongue River and the district that we are blessed, privileged to be a part of. Each of us have the similar desires to serve our community and especially its students. And I personally can't think of a better way to give back to the community than to bolstering the education and improving upon the opportunities that its students have through a public education. And I think that's a wonderful thing to strive for, a wonderful thing to push for. And the communities that we've been blessed to live in have us a core set of values that I think each of us reflect. And we would be well represented with any of these delegates. Personally, I feel that some of the experiences and some of the resources which I could bring to the table as a trustee would set me apart as a candidate or as a servant of the community, that would be exceptional. And I pledge my efforts and devotion to the district if elected and hope to see similarly throughout the rest of this campaign. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Justin?
So I would like to also state how excited I am to have the opportunity to offer myself to serve in the role of a trustee for District Number One. I feel that even though I spent my career, my last 10 years of my career teaching at Big Horn, I also, through my PLCs, my professional learning communities, my cohorts, my coaching, and just my friendships, I had an opportunity to also become familiar with the needs, not as in-depth as if I'd been teaching on the Tongue River side, but with the needs on the side in Dayton and Ranchester and their schools and with their students. And so I do feel that bringing my experience and the perspective of a teacher who, for 31 years, was in Wyoming, can be very beneficial to looking into the future at the different problems and issues that will arise and that need to be solved by our Board of Trustees and as a team with our administrators and our teachers. I can remember when I was first hired in District One in 2013, the teachers in Casper that I worked with were like, "How'd you... Wow. Big Horn? District One? Those guys are like the best." And I knew you were, and I came in nervous that I could live up to the standard. And I felt that I grew into my role here and that the teachers and my administrators challenged me to do that. To close out, I feel that it's important that the board help establish a strong, positive culture focused on learning and safety of our students. I feel that we need to continually connect with each other as a board and across our district, between the different schools. And you're gonna find that I will always hold sacred the student-teacher relationship in the classroom, because research says that's where the learning's gonna take place. And we must do everything we can to support that relationship as trustees. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Morgan?
To close, I just want voters to know that I represent the values and culture of our community, and I will continue to represent the needs and desires of our families and kids and support our teachers and staff to keep our school district and schools at the very top of the list. Communication is key in this endeavor, and I will strive to make sure our stakeholders are heard and our schools are supported. I value the opinions of our stakeholders and am ready to hear from all of them. I'm not afraid to say what needs to be said and explain the realities of the tough decisions. It is important to understand the unintentional and unseen consequences of any action and weigh all sides of the decision, but truly, our kids must come first. Our school district is unique in its physical area, enrollment size, academic and extracurricular accomplishments, and demographics. This presents its own set of challenges to battle every day, but it also provides the sense of family and connectedness within each school and across our district that makes us the very best. I have taken a pretty active role on the board since joining, and I believe that I'm right for this job to go to work every single day for our kids and the school district. Trust is earned and not to be taken lightly. I want voters to know that they can trust me to do everything in my power to do what's best for our kids, best for our teachers, and best for our community. So again, thank you, YO Theatre and the Chamber for sponsoring this. This is a great opportunity to get to know the candidates, so thank you.
Thanks, Morgan. Sharon?
In closing, in order to build our success, we not, we may, must not be afraid to ask the hard questions. We need to trust but verify and make sure that we are saying and doing what we are truly doing. Let's get parents back in the education of their children. Let's work together with the teachers and the students as a team for the good of our students' education. This way, we are all supportive of each other. And remember, the three Cs, common sense, curriculum, civic education, cost-effective education, and safety for our children. Lead us and let us lead by example. We owe it to their future and our future, and we will live and we will all win by doing this. I'm Sharon McCrhey, I'm asking for your vote in District One, and I do want to thank the Chamber and the YO for letting us do this.
Thanks, Sharon. Please join me in thanking our candidates for Sheridan School District Number One trustees. If our candidates would exit over here by the podium and our candidates for Sheridan School District Number Two would enter on the right-hand side, please. Thanks. Alright, so we'll start out with introductions, starting on my left, the candidates for Sheridan County School District Number Two, Ed Fessler, Sarah Grasky Smothers, Anthony Leckalot, Salvador Madrig... Excuse me, Salvador Madrigal, Doug Moore, Shane Rader, Jeff Tomlinson, and Dana Wyatt. Alright, well, starting out with our two minutes, two-minute intro, Ed Fessler.
Good evening. My name is Ed Fessler, and I've had the honor of serving on the Board of Education for the past four years. My employment journey with Sheridan Education started with my graduation from college in 1978 and concluded with my retirement in 2018. During the course of those years, I taught history, US history, including the AP version, American Government. Among other things, as a young man, I was a basketball coach and helped bring two state championships to the community. I served on the teacher leadership team, representing the teachers with our administration for a number of years. God knows, I've sponsored many clubs, organizations, you know, more than we need to know about. But I also served on the District Policy Advisory Committee for a number of years. The District Policy Committee is dear to my heart. I've continued serving on it for the four years that I have also been involved with the board, I should say. My last 10 years were spent being the dean of students at Sheridan High School. Accolades that I've received over the course of my career, my peers selected me as their Teacher of the Year at one point, and I also was the recipient of the era's most inspirational teacher. Upon my retirement, I had a number of peers request that I might come forward and run for the Board of Education. I've got to tell you, initially, I was very hesitant to do that, but then I started thinking about the fact that I have deep institutional knowledge of our system. And, you know, I decided I had time, and I still have time, four years later, and I'd like to continue to be part of our great district. Over the decades, I've witnessed the great community support that we've had for our educational system in Sheridan. Our teachers have earned their respect, and they are well-respected inside this community. The fact of the matter is, for decades, SESD II has received grade awards for both their academics and their extracurricular activities. Just a few weeks ago, just a few weeks ago, the Sheridan High School was given once again the best high school in the state of Wyoming for numerous times. Yesterday, Sagebrush received the fact that they've been the recipient of the Blue Ribbon Award for the third time. 63,000 schools, 365 recipients, they've had it three times, all of our elementary, all of our junior high. Our alternative school has done a great job, and the bottom line is, we have a lot to celebrate, and I'd appreciate having the opportunity to continue to support our teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next, Sarah Grasky Smothers.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Grasky Smothers. A little bit about myself, my husband and I both were, grew up in Sheridan and were products of the Sheridan Schools. We moved away for a few years where I received my bachelor's degree in nursing at California State University in Chico, California. After living somewhere else, you truly start to appreciate how amazing Sheridan really is. The academics, the arts, the athletics are unmatched. You can't find that anywhere else. We have three girls, and we knew that we wanted to come back to Sheridan and put, have our children attend the same schools that we attended, so we moved home. I am running for school board because I want to give back to this amazing community. My husband always says the best way to cast a vote is to volunteer in your community. I know how lucky we are to have the high-caliber teachers, staff, and schools that we have here. That fact is completely not lost on me. I want to be part of making them even better. This means recruiting and retaining top-notch teachers, allowing them to focus on what they do best, which is teach. I'll be a good steward of the taxpayers' money, keeping conservative values in the classroom, encourage parents to take an active role and collaborate with the school in their children's education. That's, studies show that's where the best outcomes are. As I have stated, our district is already pretty awesome, but there's always room for improvement. I'm sure after winning the 35th straight game, the Bronx didn't go home and take the week off. They kept on practicing. So just like in football, just because our district is great at so many things, it doesn't mean that we keep the status quo. Sometimes it takes a new set of eyes to see where improvements can be. I'm qualified for this position because I'm a leader. I have held leadership positions in various healthcare organizations for the past 20 years. This means I've been responsible for recruiting and maintaining staff and staff satisfaction. I've also been in charge of large budgets, prioritizing what needs to be purchased and how to accomplish that. I've also been part of creating and updating policies and procedures to meet all of the qualifications. I've attended numerous board meetings, talked to staff and parents, and have a good understanding of what the community would like to see out of the school board.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Anthony Leckalot?
Tony, please. Good evening. My name is Tony Leckalot. My parents moved our family to the Sheridan area in 1982, where I attended Woodland Park Elementary and proudly graduated from Holy Name after spending my junior high years there, and successfully graduated middle school, the middle of the pack from Sheridan High School in 1993. That fall, I enrolled in Sheridan College and graduated in '95 with an associate's science degree in ag marketing. My wife, as a fellow graduate of Sheridan High School, has taught in the music department there for 19 years. Both of our boys are product of Sheridan Schools, excelling in academics and sports, all while being afforded opportunities to expand their interests. The commitment to student-centered teaching by the teachers, staff, and administration of Sheridan County District Two helped our boys achieve a high level of academic success. This, in turn, opened further avenues for them to continue their education after graduation, a story that many share today. Life currently finds me in the middle of a 26-year career working for the railroad. During that time, I was approached to serve as a board member of the local Little Big Horn Chapter of Trot Unlimited, where I served as Secretary Treasurer for six years. The past 12 years, I have also served as both the Legislative Representative for my local union, BLENT Division 624, and Secretary Treasurer for the BLEET, Wyoming State Legislative Board. In these various positions of responsibility, I have honed in my listening skills, cultivated a common good mentality, and have learned to effectively represent those who have placed their trust in me to do so. Today, I'm running for the Board of Trustees not simply to serve the community I call home, but because I've been asked to fill a role. That role is to be an advocate and voice for the students, administration, educators, and citizens of Sheridan County. I believe in civil participation and bring a fresh, common sense approach. I believe in being responsive, and I'll ask the hard questions. I look forward to listening, learning, and reasoning together while building upon the tradition of excellence in education Sheridan County District Two has come to be known for in refining those areas where there is room for improvement. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Salvador Madrigal?
Hi. That's better. Hi, my name's Salvador, and thank you, thank you for the opportunity. My story's gonna be a little different than most what you'll hear today. I did not graduate from public school in Sheridan County or in Sheridan at all. I went to a private school, and that allowed me the opportunity to see what is good and what is not. Not everything is good about a private school with funding and with everything else that public schools here struggle, right? And I believe that that's one of my biggest strengths and one of the reasons I want to run for this position in School District Two. When I first moved to Sheridan was after graduating from Montana State University in 2005, and I managed Spiro Wiggwam, a guest ranch. Again, totally different than most of my people up here. You're all my people, by the way. And I fell in love with the community right away, even though I didn't have children yet. And I really tried to dig into what made that community special. It's the schools, it's the children in it. It's the people that come to Sheridan for the first time and they say, "Man, I said hi to this kid on Main Street, and he said, 'Hello, sir.'" Look me in the eye. It's that community, it's that sense of belonging. And I believe that they go hand in hand, community and public schools. I want to, I want to keep that going, I want to keep that strong. There's no need to say how amazing public schools here are. I mean, I can't remember the last time that Sheridan High didn't win We the People, so involved in so many different things. And I'm grateful for it, I want to serve. And my heart is with the students, with growing a desire to learn and providing them the teachers to do so.
Thanks, Salvador. Doug Moore?
Good evening. My name is Doug Moore, and I am running for a seat on the Sheridan County School District Two Board of Trustees. I am proud of the legacy of excellence that our school district is known for. I am proud to have been part of that legacy and am interested in continuing that commitment to excellence. I do not have any axe to grind, agenda to push, or specific issues to address. I am simply interested in serving our community and believe in the value of public schools. My experience and unique interests in education and education-related activities make me qualified to be a board member. I am a retired music educator. My 33-year career spanned five different school districts in three different states. 29 years of that career were here in Wyoming, the last 17 of which I worked for Sheridan County District Two. In retirement, I have repurposed my life with an emphasis on community service. Much of that service is in education-related endeavors. Since 2016, I have served as a volunteer for the Food Group, working with the Weekend Food Bag Program, helping feed Sheridan County students. I served three years on the YO Theatre Board as we developed various educational initiatives. I taught junior golf for the Sheridan Recreation District Summer Youth Program for 19 years and taught music classes for the YMCA Y-Aarts Program. I served for two months as a replacement District Two Board Trustee in 2022. I know education. I have a strong belief in the value of public schools. Public schools are the most effective, efficient, and accountable institution through which our society teaches its members the skills, knowledge, norms, and values they need to learn to become productive members of our society. As a board trustee, I will act rationally, responsibly, and respectfully in the execution of the defined responsibilities of budget oversight, superintendent evaluation, and policy review. I will continue to support the pursuit of excellence. I will continue to support the pursuit of excellence in all curricular and extracurricular programs. I will encourage proactive measures and development of relationships and enhance partnerships between the school, parents, students, and community. I will be a listener and a bridge builder. I would be honored and considered a privilege to serve our community in support of public schools, students, parents, and staff, and their continued pursuit of excellence. I am Doug Moore. I am committed to excellence and motivated to serve.
Thank you, Doug. Shane Rader.
Hello, everyone. I grew up in the Sheridan County School District Number Two system. I remember walking into Highland Park Elementary School for the first time as trustee Evers welcomed me into her kindergarten classroom. I remember running in the hallway on the last day as a fifth grader there, and then heading down to the Central Middle School, where my math teacher, former board chair Wilson, assigned me an investment project, which led me to my experience in finance for the last ten years. I also remember junior high, and I reflect on the relationships I still have with those teachers because of the impact they made on me. I remember opportunities and challenges while at the Sheridan High School that grew my leadership and knowledge about governance. My priorities are to continue growing the district as a professional learning community, as it's the basis of everything the school district does to educate all of our children. I also want to advocate for public education. I support our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. I also want to ensure the district is fiscally resilient while working to recruit and retain teachers and other staff members. I believe that our students deserve dedicated trustees who focus on the work supporting district-wide professional learning communities. I want to continue to be that trustee and serve for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Shane. Jeff Tomlinson.
Thank you, Cody. For those of you that I don't know, my name is Jeff Tomlinson. My wife is Mary Kay Tomlinson. We used to have the little store next door, the Tomlinsons Hallmark. We have two kids, both Sheridan High School graduates, and I'm a nineteen eighty-seven graduate of Sheridan High School. From Sheridan High School, I went on to Black Hill State, where I have a degree in marketing and finance. When we came back to Sheridan, I went to work for my parents. My wife went to work at the YMCA as a youth program director. We had a summertime business, so I spent my winters driving the ski bus, taking junior high kids up to Antelope Butte Skiing. I ran the YMCA youth basketball programs. We bought the Hallmark. We had our own kids. I became an itty-bitty T-ball coach, a baseball coach, a soccer coach, a football coach, a traveling basketball coach. I have coached countless kids in our community and still talk to them frequently. I'm a business leader. I'm the branch manager for a national financial institution here in Sheridan. I am responsible for budgets. I'm responsible for human resources. I understand where revenue and expenses come from. I understand that the district has a large budget, and we need to understand where our revenue and our expenses are. I understand personnel. We need to know how to get and retain employees. We need to know how to not price our local businesses out of employees because we are trying too hard to get and retain local talent. I want to serve on this school board because I have spent the last twenty years working with children, working with my kids, my kids' friends. I'm at the season of my life where my kids have gone beyond our home, and I have time to continue to serve kids in another manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Dana Wyatt.
Good evening. My name is Dana Wyatt, and I'm running for reelection because I firmly believe that our students are Sheridan's greatest asset. Having been born and raised here and as a graduate of Sheridan Schools, I understand the importance of a strong public education system for our community's future. For forty years, I was privileged to serve as a classroom teacher, with thirty-four of those years spent in Sheridan Schools. Throughout my career, I was dedicated to the success of our students, and after retiring from teaching, I knew I wanted to continue supporting education in a new capacity. In two thousand and twenty, I was elected to the school board, and over the past four years, I've worked to ensure that every decision we make reflects the best interests of our students, teachers, and our community. During my time on the board, I've served on various committees, including the Capitol Construction, parent stakeholders, legislative advocacy, the next level, and I've been honored to serve as the board's treasurer for the past two years. I've had the opportunity to engage with the state superintendent and the Wyoming legislators on important educational issues and attend annual conferences to stay informed about the latest developments in education. As a board member, my commitment remains strong, advocating for public education, fostering teamwork, and maintaining a clear vision for the district. I believe in using data to drive decisions, building positive relationships, and most importantly, focusing on the best practices that benefit all of our students. With your support, I look forward to continuing to serve our community and its future generations. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. And Dana, you'll answer our first question of the evening. So question one, the legislature has provided greater latitude for charter schools to be established. When looking at an application for a charter school, what are the areas you'll pay closest attention to and why?
That's a great question. In fact, we have had an application for District Two. The biggest thing, does that charter school offer anything that our public school does not already offer? Those are the things that charter schools should be looking at. You know, our public school here in Sheridan County, our district, is the top in the country, or, sorry, yeah, it's in the country, but the top in the state of Wyoming. And the Schiffer School, the alternative school, is top-notch. So at this point, the charter schools just don't have a place right now in Sheridan County School District Number Two.
Thanks, Dana. Ed.
I'm intrigued with the idea of charter schools, without any question, but to look back at Dana, and I reflect on the idea that we have such a strong district, we offer so many different options from our elementary schools, again, Blue Ribbon Schools right down the line, best high school in the state, we have an outstanding alternative school. If we're going to implement any type of charter school, I would want it to be able to be a school that would enhance and improve what we currently have. It's got to be an investment that is only going to benefit our students as a whole and be something that can enhance our current system. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Sarah.
I think, kind of like he said, it is a very interesting idea in this area. I think the biggest thing to look at is the support behind it. What does the community think? They are the taxpayers. They're the ones who are ultimately going to be funding it. I think education is not always a one-size-fits-all, and if there's something out there that kids who don't fit into a traditional school or one of the other schools that we have in the district, I definitely think it is worth taking a look at.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony.
Yeah, thank you. So as a product of private school during my formative years, I felt like having the choice, having that choice to do that helped me further my career at Sheridan High School. Choice builds upon and forces the perfection of the product that's being sold. So not that public schools are selling things, selling anything, but as Ed said, I believe having a charter school would essentially just enhance what Sheridan Public Schools already achieve.
Thanks, Tony. Salvador.
Thank you. Yeah, charter schools can be great, as long as they provide something that the district doesn't already. That's why it's so important that the decisions are made, the application of the charter school goes through the elected school board, right? So that it can be really dissected to, is this something that the public school's already offering or not? And really be able to understand that. If a charter is approved, the money is pulled from the same pot that the public schools in the area are going to pull from, obviously creating more difficulties that we're already foreseeing. So that's one difficulty, right? The other thing that makes it hard is the policies and how it's implemented and how that works with existing policy in existing school district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Doug Moore.
Cody, would you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, sure. The legislature has provided greater latitude for charter schools to be established. When looking at an application for a charter school, what are the areas you'll pay closest attention to and why?
I would be most concerned that compared to District Two, it does not provide a unique mission or specialization as required by law. Sheridan District Two has traditional schools, alternative schools, online, hybrid schools. We're the only school district in the state that has an alternative junior high. I'm concerned about potential exacerbation of inequalities and segregation. Charter schools typically are selective and operate like private schools and often don't enroll students from historically undeserved families. I'm also concerned with the charter school's ability to support special-needs students. There is no evidence that there is a greater measurable gain in student performance with a charter school, and they are less transparent than public schools and often take advantage of looser regulations when it comes to accountability. I also question, given the already plentiful school choices here in Sheridan County, whether they would have enough community demand to remain open. In summary, I would be very discerning when reviewing their application and contemplating my vote, taking into account all the above-mentioned criterias. I do support charter schools, however.
Thanks, Doug. Shane.
Yeah, I'd be open to the possibility or the opportunity of charter schools. What I'd look at is kind of what additional choices that they would offer that are not currently being offered within the district. Are we duplicating efforts in that? Then, as was mentioned by several other candidates, the community support piece, what is the community support for the charter school, particularly when I think in terms of sustainability for the school? You don't want to launch a charter school and then them not be able to meet enrollment needs to make their budget and have to shut down. So for applicants, I would seek to see them very prepared on what they're presenting and what they want to do with it. We've seen successful charters across the state of Wyoming that do have strong partnerships with the local district, so I would want to see that partnership.
Thank you, Shane. Jeff.
I think the first thing you'd have to look at that application, with all of the Blue Ribbon Schools that we have in Sheridan County, you'd have to ask the applicant, "Why? Why don't you want to be a part of the Sheridan County School District?" There may be some very valid reasons why parents are disheartened with something, and if we don't take the time to listen to the parents that are filling out that charter application, telling us why they don't want their students to go to Sheridan County School District School, then we're not doing our job, because there's some people out there that are telling us pretty succinctly, "We think we can do something better." For the school district, I would be very concerned on the funding aspect. Losing that many students, I'd be very concerned. So first question we have to answer if somebody comes to us is, "Why?"
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, you'll be answering our next question first. So our second question, what is the top thing that you would want to see changed or improved during your tenure on the board?
What is the top thing I'd like to see changed or improved? You know, as a parent, one of the things that kind of got me is sometimes I felt like the district, the schools have this "we got this" attitude, which can be phenomenal, right? Oh, can we do this? We got this, which is phenomenal. But sometimes I had this, "Hey, Mr. Tomlinson, we got this." And I kind of felt like they were pushing us as parents away, not engaging. And so the one thing I would like to make sure, if given the opportunity, is to help foster that type of environment where "we got this" only is part of, "Yeah, we can do this. We can succeed." Not that "we can do this without you." And I think that's really important.
Thank you, Jeff. Dana.
One of the biggest things that, over the past four years, is the communication with our state legislators and going down there and having an open conversation, because one of the biggest, one of the biggest problems is our public funding. And trying to explain to our legislators, you know, that we need more public funding. You know, our public funding strategy has not been looked at since two thousand and five, and we're struggling at this point to retain and to hold our teachers, and the expense of living here in Sheridan is really hard. So my biggest thing is to get that communication going with our state legislators and to get more public funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Ed.
That's an interesting question, Cody. Things that could be changed. You know, I'm really powerfully impressed by our district as it is, but the fact of the matter is, I think the day has come when we'll have to reevaluate being, our schedule being maintained on an agricultural basis, as it's been for over a hundred of years. I think we need to reconsider the latitude of the education time period. I think curriculum will always have to be reevaluated for the future. There will always be the basics of education, but there'll always have to be a reevaluation of what the needs are of the future. And most significantly, to go back to Dana, funding is a huge issue. Ever since the loss of severance taxes from our mineral industry, the educational system of Wyoming has been greatly impacted and will only continue to be. We need to have legislative support. We need to have legislative leaders that are willing to try to find additional funding sources, because the constitution of the state of Wyoming makes it very clear to the legislature, funding a proper education is their responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Sarah.
The biggest improvement that I'd like to see with the board is the communication and community engagement. The lion's share of your property taxes go to educating the children. I'd love to see parents be more informed as to what the board is doing. I just recently found out the board meetings are streamed to watch later. I don't know how many other people know that. How many people out there know where to find the information as to what's going to be talked about at the next board meeting? I think that just engaging the community and the parents so they can get more involved is one of the biggest things that we can improve on. And I want parents to be able to come to a board meeting and put in their input, good or bad, and not have it looked down on and be classified as noise coming from parents. Parents are the biggest stakeholders in our district, and I just feel you guys are all here because you want to be informed, but you're a rare minority, and I just wish more people were involved.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony.
Yeah, thank you. So a lot of the conversations I've had so far, especially with teachers at my third Thursday event, the third Thursday event last week, it seemed to be retaining and recruiting teachers, supporting our teachers that we already have. And that means having a pool of substitutes, qualified substitutes, and whatever avenues that we need to take to get those substitutes, so that the teachers aren't, they're not taxed, can't feel like they can't take a day off, or even the days that they need to be gone for other... feel like they can't take a day off, or even the days that they need to be gone for other other events that they have scheduled. So, yeah, it's find the avenues to to support our teachers that we already have.
Thank you, Tony. Salvador?
Yeah, thank you. Largely agree with you, Tony. My notes here are, it's all about students. How do we best take care of the students? It's one of the biggest steps, obviously, is by attracting and retaining the best possible teachers we can, right? And we all know that the school board doesn't write law. However, we can influence, and we do have, we, the board does have some say on on ideas, right, on ways that maybe hire another substitute or maybe find a way to hire one more teacher's aide to help with some of the paperwork, some of the substitute, something to make these excellent teachers. Excellent teachers are magicians. They can change a student's life. We want these people. And how do we make their life here exactly what it what they want it to be so that they can keep taking care of our students and therefore wanting to be more open and more connected to our community?
Thank you, Salvador. Doug?
Our district does so many things well, but as I've been at board meetings, I see our superintendent often say, but we can do better. I believe we can do better in messaging and proactive communication with our community regarding policies and procedures that we follow and the excellence that we achieve across all areas. We can do better in support for and development of vehicles that lead to better partnerships between students, staff, parents, and community. We can do better in the development of alternative ways to learn, apply learning, and demonstrate mastery. We need to do better in advocating for public schools and with the legislature and continuing to push for appropriate funding. That funding will allow us to maintain and develop a salary and benefits package that helps recruit and retain a high-quality staff.
Thank you, Doug. Shane?
The district can look at improving relevancy of content. We're at an exciting time in the state right now with many conversations going on about reimagining the delivery of education. We see partnerships with the governor's office and locally with Whitney Benefits in looking at how can we continue to bring relevance to the classroom. We only have 175 days with students, and we need them to be there and engaged every single day. So thinking about opportunities that we can work with, not just on a local level, but beyond that, with the Wyoming Department of Education in looking at that, that personalized learning, which we already do a lot of that with our professional learning communities to ensure our students are getting there.
Thank you, Shane. Shane, you'll be answering the next question first for us. So question three, what considerations would you want included in any policies regarding the use of AI in education? Shane?
So when it comes to AI in education, this has been a continued topic of interest of the trustees. I think first we need to start as a board to further deepen our knowledge on AI in the classroom so that we have an understanding of it from a governance perspective. The board also needs to work with administration in knowing what those procedures look like. What are we doing in terms of preparing and training our staff on what AI is in the classroom? It'll be important to kind of have that level of expertise in our district to be able to help our our students navigate AI. Thank you.
Thanks, Shane. Jeff?
Well, I'm not at work, and I'm still talking about AI, so that is wonderful. I think we, there's maybe a couple of things that I want to think about with AI and with our students. And and I think the first thing we need to teach them is, you know, let's, if we go back and think about how what the internet was when when it went into the classrooms and and was it going to be appropriate? Was it going to be inappropriate? How does that work? There was a, there was a learning curve. As and our students had to be taught what was appropriate and what was not appropriate. And as we progressed, it became very clear what was appropriate and what was not appropriate. And I think AI will follow along the same trajectory. Is we will have to, as adults, teach them, you cannot copy and paste and and let somebody else write your material for you. You have to do this yourself. So there'll be some leadership from that. The other great thing about AI, and and when you think about it, is we want to teach our students that you're not going to be able to do all of your work in half the time. We're going to encourage you to do twice the work in the exact same amount of time.
Thank you, Jeff. Dana?
I agree with a lot what Jeff said. The first thing, we're going to have to train our staff because it's the staff that's going to have to train our children how to use AI appropriately. One of the biggest concerns is safety because the internet and all of the things that are out there, safety is my biggest concern for the students. We don't know what's out there. We're not sure. This is a new realm, like everything else. It's a transitional period of time for us. It's something that's unknown. So step by step, but getting our staff trained, getting the Board of Trustees trained, the administration, that's our first step. What and our technology group is is phenomenal, but getting training first and then taking it step by step and taking it to the classroom and and guiding our students as we've always done.
Thank you, Dana. Ed?
I don't really have a whole lot that I can add to this topic from what's been said. I realize that we live in a new world in its own right, a new world order of intelligence. Artificial intelligence is something that is new, is going to be developed, and most assuredly, we're going to have to develop policies to make sure that there are that there are policies to make sure that our students are protected, that it's used for the right reasons in the curriculum. But the fact of the matter is, I think AI, when appropriately used in the future with my limited knowledge, will be something that will take education potentially to a whole nother level that is beyond what we can even comprehend at this time. It is going to be something that'll be evolutionary as it goes through the process. Schools will have to learn to grow with it. Families will have to learn to grow with it, the students themselves. I want to go back and reiterate one statement that was made. I worry about the safety of kids, you know, I don't want them impacted in a negative way. So future development of policies is going to have to be defined around the areas, safety of kids, proper curricular usage. And it's an exciting time, but it's a time that's almost beyond my comprehension at this moment.
Thank you, Ed. Sarah?
I remember being, you know, in elementary school and teachers telling us, you have to learn how to multiply because you're never going to have a calculator in your pocket at all times. And here we are with cell phones. So AI is here. It's here to stay. We need to teach our kids the appropriate way to use it. We need to get teacher involvement in as to when it's appropriate in the classroom. It can't replace critical thinking, but we do need to teach our kids how to use the technology that's out there. But it can't replace the the proper education, the the basic education that we want to make sure that our kids have once they graduate.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony?
Yeah, so I barely know how to use Google, sort of, but I would just, I would echo what the rest of the candidates up here have have said. There's, there's not a whole lot more to add, so thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Salvador?
I agree with what's been said, legalities, how that's going to work, staff training. It's going to be changing for a long time. It's going to be adapting, and we're going to be adapting to it. I'm hesitant to adapting or requiring too much of students, right? They're already, depending on the age levels, but already at a very tough time in their life. They're already adapting it a lot. I don't want to get priorities wrong, so I want to make sure that we take our time and that we train and that we would take every precaution we can to keep it safe. That that would be my priority is to keep the students educated and safe.
Thank you, Salvador. Doug?
It's almost impossible to protect our children from the world. It's entirely possible to prepare them for the world. Any board policy regarding AI or any technology that might come down in the future, because AI wasn't even around when I retired eight years ago. But this policy needs to be evolutionary, and it needs to include the fact that our teachers are professionals and they know best practices in teaching and learning of any concept. Any teaching, however, needs to reflect personal integrity, how to use any technology for positive use and and avoid negative abuses. I don't know a whole lot about AI. I would be concerned about any policies that that do not enlist the teachers and their their ability to know best practices on how to deal with this.
Thank you, Doug. Doug, you'll be starting out with the final question. So question four is, what current budget line item do you feel requires the greatest scrutiny and why? Doug?
I believe every budget line item deserves scrutiny. One of our designed responsibilities is budget oversight. We have a very rigorous development process in the budget. It goes from the teachers to the department heads, to the principals, to the superintendent and the business office. But I think every every step of the way, there those policies, those line items are scrutinized. I don't think there's any abuses being done right now. I I trust our staff. I trust our business officer. We have glowing reports in our audits. But part of our responsibility as board members is to scrutinize the budget and oversee it. And so I think every line item should be scrutinized. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Shane?
Thanks for the question, Cody. When I think about budget budget line item, the first one that comes to mind is our salaries and benefits. It's by far our largest line item that we have in our budget. Just below 85% of our budget is for salaries and benefits. We tend, looking across the the state at other budgets, we tend to be a little bit higher. Average is 80 to 85% of a school budget is for salaries and benefits. We tend to be on the on the high end of that. I think there's been a lot of work that's gone into budgets over the last number of years, looking at particularly recruitment and retaining retainment of teachers and other staff. We've looked at our our teachers, our certified staff, as well as various classified hourly positions. So it comes back to salaries and budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Jeff?
I would have to echo a little of Shane's comments. Obviously, if the preponderance of the budget is going to salaries and benefits, you have to, you have to look hard at that. I had an interesting conversation with a teacher the other day. They told me they get two personal days off a year, and they had to take a unpaid day to attend their child's graduation last spring in July or in in May. That was on a Friday. And I thought, this this doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I think we need to figure out a better way to get some better, get the benefits to the teachers, to thank them for the hard work that they're doing, but make sure we're not putting it, the budget, out of whack. We we have to, we have to watch the dollar spend, but we have to figure out how to do it maybe a little better.
Thank you, Jeff. Dana?
Ditto on the line item budget. Around 85% goes to our people. Put it, to put things in perspective, our state allows us about around $40,000 per teacher they give us. And so just an example, we have a teacher who, at the end of the day, with insurance and benefits, we end up with $89,000 paying them. And so that's a difference of $49,000 that the district is taking for one teacher out of the general fund. So yes, we do need to look at that budget item. We do need to come up with with something to look at our teachers because they are our treasure. And they're the ones that are in the battlefield, they're in the classroom, and they are the ones that are are teaching our 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 children. So it would be, it would be the for salaries and benefits.
Thank you, Dana. Ed?
I agree. There's no question at all. The most critical thing in our budget is being able to provide for our educators and our support staff. There is no question. We are going backwards as a state at this point in time. In 2010, it is stated that we were able to offer almost a 25% increase in salary to compare to our neighboring states. And consequently, we were able to continue to do exactly what everyone is suggesting. We're able to attract and retain the best educators possible. We have lost that at this point. And I do not hear the legislature discussing issues on how we can find alternative funding sources to try to offset that. Everyone knows that if you're a young person trying to come into this community right now, it is a difficult situation to try to find a home. If you're coming out of college with debt, if you have childcare, et cetera, you know, money, we money is essential. That I should state that an improvement of the opportunity to afford new teachers is going to be essential for the welfare of our future students.
Thank you, Ed. Sarah?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What current budget line item do you feel requires the greatest scrutiny and why?
Okay. As Ben said, 80% of our $54 million budget goes towards HR. I think that is probably not something we ever want to touch. Like Ed said, we want to be able to maintain and recruit quality teachers. I would want to look at every other line item, scrutinize it, keep the money close to the classrooms. The budget that was presented to the board this year was a 19-page gross overview of the budget. It, I would want to have a more detailed, see, you know, what did the seventh grade classroom in science spend on whatever, and just try to find places where we could nip and tuck a few dollars away to be able to maintain our quality staff.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony?
You. So as a relative newcomer to this process, and I taking a look at this year's 24, 25, 23, 24, and 24, 25 budget, there's a lot of big numbers on those on those 19 pages. It's hard to tell based on the level of transparency within on what's provided, what we should take a look at. Obviously, wages and benefits takes up takes up a lot of the budget currently and will continue to in the future. One thing I would was, I would note, though, if we, if you've ever taken a look at Netroona County Schools, their their budget online, their online budget that you and I can look at, has everything has everything there. You can look, anybody can look to see what is being spent from every department, every classroom. So I would say that the entire budget needs scrutiny.
Thanks, Tony. Salvador?
Yeah, thank you. It's hard to really pick one line item out of a budget, right? Because a budget is off balance by cents as much as it is by dollars. However, I think the one line item that like to echo everybody else, that we cannot cut is wages and benefits. For us to keep attracting these students, you know, I called them magicians, Dana called them our treasures, to be able to keep attracting them, we have to give them the quality of life that they want. I mean, Sheridan County, our community takes care of the rest. We are so, so gifted with so much here, right? The the beauty and this is a place people want to live. So now, how do we make it so that people can? And my opinion, that's that's one line item that that we simply can't touch. We, unless we raise, we can't cut.
Thank you, Salvador. Salvador, you'll start off with the Salvador, you'll start off with the two-minute closing. So, Salvador?
Okay, two minutes go a lot faster than I thought when I was sitting down there with you guys, but thank you for the opportunity. I'm up here because I really, again, like I said, starting, going to a private school, opened my eyes to how much of a good difference one excellent teacher can make and how much of a bad difference indifference can make. I have a heart for students, for our youth, for the desire to learn. And I want to give back. I want to give back to the community. When I first moved here, one of the first people I met is, is gone now, but an excellent man, excellent educator. And he taught me that the community strengthens the schools and the school strengthens the community. And I've come to see that and I want to help that continue. I want to go into things like what we've talked about today, such as, you know, AI cautiously while still maintaining a child's imagination and their interest to learn. And being able to maintain a student, a student-teacher relationship that incentivizes that communication and that freedom to ask questions and feel secure and feel comfortable to do so. I want to be able to keep the stuff we didn't talk about, right? Like CTE and different courses like that, because it's the regular, to call it that, path of education isn't for all students. I want to do as much as we can for as many students as possible. And I ask you, I urge you, get out, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends. I'd be willing to bet that we all want the same thing. We all want the best for our students, for the youth in our community. And if we can find out the why, why we want to make those changes, we can, we can find out the how. And I want to help with that. Thank you for allowing me.
Thank you Salvador. Doug?
Thank you Cody. Thank you to the chamber and to the YO Theater for hosting this event. Thank you to my fellow candidates and to those who are watching. Thank you to my wife Pam, who has joined me on this journey and made sure I had the correct color of socks on tonight. Thank you to my campaign team and those who support me. A few months ago, I was attending an event at the M&amp;M Center. While I was waiting for the program to begin, I was looking up at the advertising banners on the walls surrounding the arena. One in particular caught my attention. It simply read "Our Children, Our Responsibility." I immediately thought of a book that came out years ago entitled "It Takes a Village to Raise a Child." And I thought, this is why I am running for the school board. To accept that responsibility, to be part of that village, to support the continued commitment to excellence that our school district is known for and to serve our community in this unique role. To encourage and support those partnerships that make up our village and be part of that collective responsibility for raising our children. To encourage the evolving development of education delivery methods so that all our children have a variety of ways and environments to learn and show their learning proficiency. As I looked up at that banner, I thought, what a tremendous and daunting responsibility. I wondered if that banner was actually calling me out. It was. I wondered if I was truly up to the task. I am. As you consider your options for school board trustees, remember there are eight candidates running for five seats. I do not have to be your first choice. I don't even have to be your second choice. I would just be honored and humbled to be one of your five choices. Please vote for Doug Moore for District Two Board Trustee.
Thank you Doug. Shane?
As one of your trustees for the past eight years, including two years as board chair, I've worked to create more opportunities for our students in our district. We've introduced programs like marching band that engage students both inside and outside the classroom. We've expanded to offer two sections of preschool within our elementary schools. As an area director and vice president of the Wyoming School Boards Association, I've brought together boards from Sheridan and Johnson Counties to collaborate on key educational issues. Two years ago, I invited the Sheridan College Board to join our efforts strengthening our K through fourteen pathways that we have available for our students. On a national level, I serve as Wyoming's Director on the Consortium of State School Boards Associations, advocating for our district and Sheridan County on a broader level. Last year, I co-presented with Park One out of Powell and Hot Springs, One out of Thermopolis, on professional learning communities at the Wyoming State, or, excuse me, Wyoming School Board Association State Conference, sharing our district's work with schools across the state. My passion for education and dedication to students of Sheridan County and beyond has only deepened over the years. As your trustee, I will continue to advocate for opportunities that enrich our students' experiences and prepare them for success. I'm incredibly grateful for the support you've shown me over the last eight years and humbly ask for your vote again. Together, I know we can continue the important work of ensuring every student in our district has the chance to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you Shane. Jeff?
Thank you Cody. I think that all of us up here offer a unique perspective. I think mine maybe is a little different than many others that is up here. As a business leader, I get to see clients. I get to see tax returns. I get to see their side of what is going into the school district. I know what that, what that number looks like to people. I know what that, what that brings their emotions out as. As a business leader, I'm in charge of hiring. I work diligently with the Human Resource Department. I know what wages and benefits should look like to be competitive. I have a little different depth of knowledge, I think, than some people that are here, not better or worse, just different. I think we all are different. I do think that a board needs to be a diverse group of people. We should have attorneys and realtors. It's good to see someone who works for the railroad sitting up here. He's got a schedule that's different than everybody else's, who's, everybody, we need to have all the input so we can make better decisions, not just a singular track. One of the things that I would really want to bring to our district and would be consistency. I look at some of the policies and procedures that we have. I see that we opt in. They ask us as parents to opt into this thing or opt out of this thing. We're going to deliver this versus the parent portal. We're not going to deliver this. I think when we raise our children, the one thing that makes them thrive is consistency. And if we are going to earn the trust of the parents and the community and the students and the teachers, we have to be consistent in everything that we deliver. Thank you.
Thank you Jeff. Dana?
First of all, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to the YO Theater for hosting this forum tonight. As I close, I want to affirm my commitment to ensuring our school board remains responsible, respectful and unwavering in its advocacy for public education. I believe in supporting a curriculum that teaches the truth about our history. And I'm dedicated to fully funding our schools so every child has the freedom to learn, to grow and to pursue their dreams. Wyoming faces challenges with school funding, which has created concerns around teacher retention and recruitment. I am committed to addressing these issues to ensure we provide a quality education for every student. Over the past few years, I've worked hard to evaluate, support and vote on policies that have helped make our district one of the best in the state. I want to continue this work, ensuring our schools remain places where students can thrive academically, socially and emotionally. Beyond my role on the board, I'm proud, I'm proud to be a part of this community. I'm a member of St. Peter's Episcopal Church, a mentor, producer for future filmmakers under the YO Play Program. I volunteer backstage for the YO Theater Gala. But most importantly, I'm a grandparent, helping to raise two young grandsons. I see firsthand the importance of creating a strong educational foundation for future generations. This sense of purpose motivates me to remain involved and to continue making a difference for our children. Thank you for your time and support as I seek reelection to continue serving this community and its students.
Thank you Dana. Ed?
First of all, I think public education is the absolute key to the future of our country. It has made us in the past, it'll make us in the future. I too would like to take a moment to thank the chamber and the YO for hosting this. And I'd also like to make a comment that when I look at my fellow candidates up here, there are eight individuals that have all committed themselves to being public servants. I don't think the electorate can go wrong with any one of these candidates. I feel they'd all be wonderful additions to our staff. I want to go back though. I am so proud of this district. I've committed my entire professional life to this district and I've been surrounded by teachers that are just unbelievable. You know, I tried to get in in my introduction, but the fact that Sharon High School, for multiple times, has been recognized as the top high school in the state. But not only that, it's in the top ten percent of the nation. To consider that this little community, when we see these blue ribbon banners hanging from the schools, you know, there were three hundred and sixty-five, typical number by the way, selected out of sixty-three thousand elementary schools. State of Wyoming had three. We have Sagebrush of one of those three who has collected this award three times. All of our elementary schools have collected this. If you play the numbers out, that means that our schools are in the top point zero, zero, five percent of the elementary schools as defined by the Department of Education, the US Department of Education. I am extremely proud of our teachers, of our administrators, of our community, the environment that has been so supportive. For myself, and I only want that for the future teachers. You know, every single student deserves the right to a great education, to springboard them to a successful and positive adult life. We do that and I know that will continue. I would appreciate your support at the ballot. Vote Ed for education. Thank you.
Thanks Ed. Sarah?
For putting this on this evening. Over the past several years, I've attended the board meetings, something not everybody on the stage can say. I've seen what the board does well and I've seen room for improvement. I've talked with staff who just want to be heard. I promise to be an advocate. We're facing a nationwide teacher shortage. And I know oftentimes, people don't quit jobs, they quit bosses. The school board is the teachers, I don't want to say bosses, but they're the ones that are responsible for ensuring that the teachers are happy where they're at. I want the teachers to know that when they fill out their, their comments on their survey questions every year, that the board is looking at that, that the board is taking that into consideration and making policies, improvements, whatever needs to be done to be able to keep those teachers here. I may not know all the answers, but I promise to ask the tough questions. I'll roll up my sleeves and educate myself on the matters that I'll be responsible for voting on. I promise to represent the desires of my community. I'm dependable, dedicated and I'm up to the task. The constituents here deserve that. I'll strive to make positive changes for the good of the students, the teachers and the parents. I want my three daughters and I want all of your sons and daughters to have the best education in the country. I believe this is possible with the strong foundation that we have. The kids should come first. I ask that you vote for me, Sarah Grasky Smothers, for SDS Two School Board in November.
Thank you Sarah. Tony?
Thank you Cody. Thank you to the Sheridan Chamber of Commerce and the sponsors that have helped host this forum. Also, thank you to you that showed up tonight and those of you that are online. I believe strong and thriving communities create strong and thriving schools together because every student, educator, administrator, parent and guardian are members of this community and each play an integral role in the perfection of public education. Sheridan Public Schools have a long history of allowing kids to achieve at the highest level. I'm running to help foster that legacy into the future so that one day, should they choose, my boys can come back to raise their families in a community that Sheridan County District Two continues to nurture. A place where strong values, quality education and a deep sense of belonging shape future generations. My hope is that the district remains committed to providing a supportive environment that empowers students to reach their full potential, ensuring that Sheridan County remains not just a place to call home, but a lifelong foundation for growth and opportunity. G.K. Chesterton once said, "There's a lot of difference between listening and learning." I'm here to do both and would greatly appreciate your vote this November in support of my goals to serve Sheridan community and advocate for everyone with a vested interest in the success and prosperity of Sheridan County District Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you Tony. Please join me in thanking our candidates for Sheridan School District Number Two trustees. And on behalf of the Chamber and the Government Affairs Committee, I'd like to thank all the candidates and all of our volunteers. A special thank you goes out to the YO Theater and the staff, but especially our chamber staff. Please give a round of applause for our chamber staff. Thank you all for attending and please vote on or before November fifth. Thank you.